They're on their way. They're standing by. Are we ready to record? Potama, thank you. Appreciate that. We'll go ahead and begin then. We welcome you all out to our weekly meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 27th day of January 2015. Wow, January's already pretty well come and gone. Amazing. We will begin our meeting today by, with an invocation offered by Sylvia Salisbury, who is a frequent attender of our meetings. She's one who comes just about every week and we sure appreciate her attendance and her willingness to lead us this morning in invocation. After which our pledge of allegiance will be led by our county engineer, Chad Meyerhofer, the deputy assistant county engineer. And then, well, whatever.
Wow, you've got a new title.
And then our thought of the day will be by Commissioner Gibson. Sylvia?
Our dear Father in heaven, we thank thee this morning for the opportunity to come to thee in prayer in this public meeting. We thank thee for our wonderful country, for the inspired constitution that has blessed our lives so much, and for those courageous men who brought it forth and have provided us with the blessings of liberty that we enjoy. We pray for our leaders as they make decisions. We especially pray for those who, whose desires are to uphold the constitution, that their influence will be felt greatly. And we pray that thou bless more people to take a greater interest in the management of the affairs of our country and our state. And now we pray that thou bless our leaders here in our county, that they will be blessed with wisdom in making the decisions that will be fair and equitable for all. We again thank thee for all that we have and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, well, thank you again Sylvia for that beautiful invocation. Appreciate the spirit that that has brought to our meeting. And thank you to Chad for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Thought of the day today, I was thinking about, you know, it's interesting. I think it's human nature that we, we all kind of think that that we have something important to add to any particular debate and we do. I mean, that's really what this country was based on, was lots of different voices, diverse in nature, together and, and sharing that diversity towards a common goal. But it's always a challenge because sometimes I get, we get, I think, to thinking that maybe we, our opinion's more important than others or when should we jump in or when should we, when should we not? When's the appropriate time to speak and when's not? So I came across a couple of things. One of my favorite quotes that I heard again repeated yesterday at a groundbreaking that was, that I think has been a guide for me for a long time and I think you've all heard it, but it's by Ralph Waldo Emerson. He says, "What you do speaks so loudly that I cannot hear what you say." So it's a good reminder for us to let our actions speak louder than our words and maybe, maybe that we don't need to say quite so much if we, if we lead with our actions. Then I came across a funny little one that was on my daily calendar that, that I gotta share as well and it's, it's by Ambassador Ves Alcar, who was, and I'm sorry, I'm not a Star Trek fan, so I'll say this wrong, but Charles, Charles Lucia? He plays Charles Lucia on Star Trek.
Why do you look at me?
I don't know. Are there any Trekkies in here?
Just 'cause I'm the youngest one here.
Anyway, he says this. "I think maybe our biggest asset should be patience. I let everyone talk until they're exhausted and then when I start, they're too tired to argue." I thought that was something that I probably could learn from, so. Anyway, a couple, one a little more serious and one a little more lighthearted, so. Hope that those give us some food for thought. All right, we'll move on then with our business today, beginning with our consent items. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $190,156.72. Request for approval of warrants number 317-553 through 317-758 in the amount of $2,012,354.83. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on January 20th, 2014. Request from Weber County Recreation Facilities for approval to surplus an age ID banned machine. That is. Request from Weber County Recreation Facilities for approval to surplus five cash registers. Request for, to set the date of February 17th, 2015 at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing to consider and take action. On request to amend the Weber County Land Use Code Title 110 Signs, Chapter 1, Western Weber Signs and Title 104, Chapter 25 in the M3 Zone by increasing the size of identification signs in the M3 Zone from eight square feet to 20 square feet. And item number seven is request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following. We had a string of retirements this year, the end of the year. Thomas L. Hadley, Wes Barfus, Michelle Singleton, Deble, Kelly S. Hipwell, Jan M. Zogmaster and D.W. Smith. Commissioners, there is the list of the consent items. Is there any questions, comments, or action on those particular items?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items. It's read.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second then to adopt and approve the consent items is read. Is there any additional discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, to our action items. Welcome up Todd Ferraro. We appreciate you being here with us today. Item number one is a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. And I think, Todd, I think it would be wise, especially new commissioner, fairly new commissioner, if you'd give us a brief overview of the duties and responsibilities of that board as you present the names.
Okay. Good morning Commissioners, good morning others. Tourism Tax Advisory Board, you'll hear it referred to as TTab, much shorter. What that board in actuality does is we put together recommendations for the commissioners on what direction tourism is going in our county, what facilities, what groups are coming to town, what are the needs of our county in the future for tourism. The other piece of that puzzle is we do have some grant money. It's $20,000 a year that we can cede new events in our community. The hope of ceding those events is to perpetuate events that would come back regularly. So a lot of times they're grassroots, smaller events. And usually it's about a $2,500 to $3,000, you know, seed money to get an event going. We do have a point to look at. Some may be facilities. We took, one group is the western part of our county, which doesn't seem to get mentioned as much in tourism, but they have some great attractions out west. Some are tied into the facilities around the ski industry and outdoor adventure. You know, the TTab, the money brought in from TTab is pretty diversely spent and there are a few things coming up on TTab that are about to fall off in the next couple of years, so there's some monies available. So our thought was we could give you a little more substantial recommendation in the years to come than we have in the past. Will Schaefer would be a new addition with the bylaws and organizational structure of TTab. We have room to add people. We're not full. This was a little hard to say at the TTab table, but we're aging. I looked around and to me I said, demographics of who's at this table is not just the industries they represent. We have people from county facilities, ski industry, hospitality, so on and so forth, but I'm maybe one of the younger ones. I don't want to say that, but we talked about, there's the 20-year-old generation, the 30-year-old generation that are a huge economic impact in our county. And we went and looked for a business leader that was making a difference in our community, being active in our community, that could give us some insight on that. And, and we thought Will would be a good addition, Mr. Schaefer would be a good addition. He is one of the owners of Lucky Slice. And as you guys know, it's on the corner of Lincoln and 25th. And not only is his business expanded greatly, but I've personally seen him involved in a good half dozen community events in the last year or so, so we thought, you know, he would bring something to the table that we don't currently have. Any questions, Commissioner Ebert, on what TTab does?
Well, and I don't want to get too far off base, but when you say you're going to have some that are going to fall off over the next couple of years.
Their terms.
Okay.
So those first three listed, Mr. Mike Fenton, Kim Bouchard, and myself, our terms are up. I am past chair. We did elect new chairs for, of ones that terms are not falling off. Either they have asked to be back on or we have asked them to be back on since we're a little bit mid-project. And then Mr. Will Schaefer would be an addition to the TTab board.
So by policy, when you say our terms are up, are these appointed every year?
No, they're multi-year terms. I believe they're three years. They vary a little bit because you don't want everyone going at the same time. There's some threes and I think there's a couple of twos that are on that board also.
Do they have term limits?
They do not.
Two terms? Okay.
They do not. We, I think we drill them hard enough that a couple is enough. I think there's a couple that are on a third term. And Kim Bouchard is one that we asked to come back because we are kind of mid, mid-project and she was leading one of our team groups and they were doing a good job. And the other two said it would be nice if we could finish out this process over the next two years for you guys, so.
So she was on a, her term will be up next year, is that what you're saying?
It's up now.
Okay.
So it's two more years.
Two more years, okay. Well, we certainly appreciate the work that, that your group has done and continues to do. I am familiar with the, the three recommended reappointments and I'm aware of the dedication that they have each shown to the organization and to the, to the county. I don't know Mr. Schaefer, but I've heard good things about him and seen his, his recommendation. I don't really have any questions regarding that. Commissioners, do you have any questions or follow-up? Chris, you're, you're looking like you might want to say something, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, pipe in.
I've got a hard copy of the resolution here and it, it has blanks for the names to be filled in. That's our process. Usually is leaving that blank for you to decide, but it also has them listed as four-year terms. Initial terms can be longer or shorter than the set three-year. So I just want to make sure that I get the correct terms for each one. And perhaps you could email me afterwards the exact terms for each person that they ultimately select and I will make sure that is reflected in the resolution.
Excellent, thank you. And by the way, not to, to miss Chris, we apologize, I apologize for missing him in the first place. It's always good to have our, our county attorney with us. Dave Wilson, the deputy county attorney generally staffs this meeting, but he's unavailable today and so we get the, the boss.
Thanks, it's a pleasure to be here.
Newly elected county attorney, he's doing a great job, so appreciate him being here. All right, Commissioners, do you have a motion? Looks like Commissioner Ebert had asked for a number.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 15. Reappointing Mike Fenton, Kim Bouchard, Todd Ferrero. And appointing, if I said your name wrong, I apologize. Will Schaefer to the Weber County Tax Advisory Board pending the appropriate terms by their bylaws.
I second that.
Okay, then we have a motion in a second to approve and adopt Resolution Number 15, appointing members of the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. Is there discussion of that motion? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Thank you Todd.
Thank you Commissioners.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll get that worked out.
Chris, I will get you an email for that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, item number two. Request for approval of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners appointing a member to the Weber County Audit Committee. Commissioner Ebert, you're presenting.
Well, we're excited. We had our audit committee meeting and we're moving forward on internal audits and other audit issues within the county. But to do that, we need to appoint an outstanding member from the community that is no longer available or open. And the committee recommending Matt Taggart, who has a tremendous amount of experience. I could ask Mr. Ricky Hatch to maybe go over some of that experience that led him to be the recommended appointment.
Thanks Commissioner. Matt Taggart serves as a manager with Ida Bailey, a local accounting firm, quite large accounting firm now due to some expansions. It was formerly known as Schmidt Griffiths and Smith. I met Matt just a couple of months after taking office. He was one of the first members of our external audit team that I had met and was managing the engagement at that point. Very wise as far as accounting and auditing, auditing goes. He's also involved in the community. He sits on the Board of the Red Cross and has been a frequent. We've reached out to him frequently for advice and counsel as far as accounting and auditing ideas are concerned. Ida Bailey is no longer our external accountant. The contract with them expired and we selected a separate firm. And so this now opens up Mr. Taggart to be able to sit on our audit committee, which he has agreed to do. And we're really excited for him to, to contribute. I think he'll have some excellent ideas.
So once we get the committee fully staffed, we'll move forward on concepts and directions for both financial but operating audits and managerial audits and stuff like that that I think helps the county to function more efficient, efficiently, but also creates the transparency that we've been looking for in the county government.
Commissioner Ebert presents this item because he is the commissioner that's assigned to that audit committee and has been meeting with them and, and that's why this recommendation comes through him. Just thought I'd clarify that so that the public knew what the reasoning was there. Okay, so Commissioners, would, would, well, Commissioner Ebert, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd love to make motions. I just gotta get back to the right page here. What number are we on?
16.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 16, appointing Matt Taggart to the Audit Committee for Weber County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then to approve and adopt Contract Number 16, appointing Matt Taggart as a member of the Weber County Audit Committee. Is there discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution.
Oh, that is a res. Roll, roll call.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
And Chair Gibson?
Aye. It's a good thing you caught that. I almost made it a contract. All right, thank you. That resolution passes. Item number, Douglas, before you come up, let me just do, squeeze in one more thing under the welcome that I forgot. This is not an action item. This is just another item that I wanted to bring up under welcome and forgot to do so. And that is, I hope I don't catch you off-guard here and scare you, but Leanne, would you bring Devron up and introduce him to us as the new, as one of the new members of your staff? I think it'd be appropriate for the body and for the public to recognize Devron and, and his new position.
Commissioners, I would like to introduce you to Devron Anderson. He is my chief deputy surveyor and we are so excited to have him on board and we appreciate him being here today. So I introduce Devron. Say hi. There you go.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come here and be a part of this team. I'm excited to do the work that needs to be done.
Thank you Devron. Tell us a little bit about yourself before you go.
I'm a father of four. I've been a licensed land surveyor now for about eight, seven years and I've had the opportunity to work for some of the local cities around northern Utah. And I was previously employer of the surveyor's office a number of years ago and I'm happy to be back.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here Devron and look forward to working with you as well. Just thought it would be good for all of you to meet the new chief deputy in the recorder surveyor's office over the recorder.
Thank you.
Or, excuse me, over the surveyors group. So thanks for being here, Devron.
And if I could add, we started talking to Devron right before we walked in here and he had some tremendous ideas on efficiency and how that surveyor's office will continue working forward. So I was impressed with what he's looking to implement and that Leanne had such great vision to find someone who's gonna move that, continue to move that forward, so thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate that. Okay, to item number three. Item number three is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and West Haven City to fund capacity and safety improvements for 4,700 West in West Haven. And presenting today is Douglas Larson, who, as you know, heads up our Economic Development Department and also helps with the transportation prioritization and program that through the council of governments. So Douglas, thank you for being here and presenting this to us today.
Certainly, it's a pleasure as always. Thank you very much Commissioners. So standard, you have before you our standard funding agreements that are tied to our local transportation funds that Commissioner Gibson, you indicated is essentially administered by, by WACOG and the county commission. This funding agreement was part of the 2014 cycle of transportation applications that were presented to the COG and the county commission and was previously approved in that list of, of applications or list of projects that were submitted to you in the fourth quarter of 2014. And as we move closer to the project, we then enter into these funding agreements. So this project proposes improvements to 4,700 West in West Haven and the boundaries are 4,200 South to 4,800 South. We'll complete a major north-south corridor through West Haven serving the cities of Roy, Hooper, West Haven, as well as the unincorporated area of, of Weber County. This project will create a needed collector's street for the area that currently is disconnected from 4,800 South to 4,600 South. So there's just no road. That's, that's where our local funds are really essentially participating on this project. In total, it's, it's almost a $3.9 million project. The estimated cost of the improvements from 4,600 to 4,800 South is $1.38 million. West Haven plans to contribute $200,000 towards the improvements in that area and as well, they have garnered an additional $2.5 million from Wasatch Front Regional Council through their STP program. So this contract provides that local funds in the amount of $80,000 from the Corridor Preservation Fund and $1,100,000 from the Third Quarter Cent Sales Tax for Transportation Fund to support this project. Do you have any questions Commissioners?
So Douglas, the 80, $80,000 covers the whole section?
It covers the right-of-way, no, just the right-of-way needed from 4,600 to 4,800 South. Right-of-way, beyond that is, is being covered by the STP funds and development is taking care of the, a portion of the right-of-way as well.
So does that then become, I can't remember, I know 4,700 from 4,000 South all the way to Plain City is a state road. Does this become a state road in this case?
No sir.
Or this, this will maintain, be maintained as a city road? So basically from 4,000 South heading south, once it's connected, will all be a city road?
West Haven, yes sir.
Operated, maintained by the city?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Douglas? I, go ahead.
If I may, one comment, I just note you didn't mention it, but you know, our apologies to some degree for the 2014 date on the contract and we still have Commissioner Zogmaster. This contract was submitted to West Haven back in 2014 prior to our new commissioner's arrival, so. Sorry for the scratch outs.
Thanks.
So since we're leaving things off, not to be bringing up other things, but is there something else you forgot to share with us today?
No sir.
So we have an event coming up tomorrow that we need to remember?
We do not.
Okay, I just, I'm just making sure that there's everything's been.
It's only Tuesday.
Who do you want to admit when they're getting old?
Okay.
We'll be skiing later this week Commissioner.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're getting the truth and the whole truth.
Yeah, I, I, I thank you Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Wow, that was a real warm thank you.
Yeah, well, happy birthday Douglas.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the work you do for us.
Thank you.
Oh, now we can get to the real business.
Contract 26.
I'll make a motion to accept Contract Number 26 between Weber County and West Haven City for funding of a road and safety improvements in West Haven.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and in discussion. I just need to make, want to make a statement of how I think well this transportation fund has been functioning. As you know, this is a result, this funding source is a result of the Quarter Cent local transportation option that was passed several years ago. That frankly, for the first time in, that I'm aware of, local governments have had some say over, well, they've had say through the planning process, but some say as to funding allocation really when it comes down to it, to local priorities, local transportation priorities and how they could be funded. And I think it is, has been a tremendous process that has worked out very well. We have spent a lot of time working on the process and there's always time and opportunity to improve that process. But it's one in which all of the cities, I think, believe and, 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 including the county, believe and feel as though they have an opportunity for active input. They recognize that, that it's an opportunity to tackle projects that are more regional in nature and not necessarily just pertaining to their individual cities. And so I think that has been a positive thing because you have cities and counties stepping back and saying, okay, this may not be in my city, but as a whole, it enhances the transportation grid in this particular way. And it's been a really, really good process that we've navigated here now for several years through this process and, and I think that helps us an awful lot as the legislature continues to talk about enhanced transportation funding, that we have a system that we can plug into any additional resources that they might provide that we, that we have confidence in, that runs smoothly and that is well-administered and, and run appropriately. So a lot of that compliment has to go to Doug, who administers that program on behalf of the council of governments in the county. And so Doug, I just wanted to bring that up and tell you thank you for that excellent work.
You're very welcome. That's, that's very kind. If I may, Mr. Chair, just to further your comment. This project actually is, is a very good example of a project that would likely have not occurred without the local funds. And it's also another good example of a project that has leveraged other dollars very well. We started effectively this program in, in 2008 and since that time, we've distributed or programmed for projects currently and into the future just over $70 million and we've, we've leveraged an additional 75 million. So our processes in, in, from one respect, enabled almost $150 million in transportation projects that would not have occurred. So, thanks for the opportunity.
You bet. And I, I think again, the partnership there has been great. Hooper, this is tremendously important to Hooper City, even though it's in West Haven. It's important to West Haven and it also is a, is an important connector for the unincorporated part of the county. So again, it's, it is one of those where three small jurisdictions that couldn't probably have done this on their own were able to get it done together through this local funding. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a motion in a second on the floor and unless there's any further discussion, I'll for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And to item number four, we have Mr. Gentry here to present. And to item number four, we have Mr. Gentry here to present this from our Planning Division. And item number four is consideration and action on final approval of the retreat at Wolf Creek, a cluster subdivision, Phases Two and Three, including a financial guarantee in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred-sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents. And Phase Two, seventy-one-thousand-one-hundred-fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. And Phase Three, seventy-nine-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. These funds are held in the Engineering Escrow Account. Jim, welcome.
Thank you. And the applicant is looking for final approval of Phase Two and Three, the retreat at Wolf Creek subdivision. Phase Two has eleven lots, Phase Three has sixteen lots, and we are holding the escrow for the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred-sixteen dollars. Most of the improvements have already been installed, so this is more of the warranty and guarantee of the improvements for a year. This comes with unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission for final approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gentry?
So, I've, I've been involved in the process, so the subdivision, the cluster, Phases Two and Three's already been approved?
It's already gone through the Planning Commission, received a recommendation to the Plan, or the County Commission for final approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right, commissioners. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final approval of the retreat at Wolf Creek, a cluster subdivision with the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred-sixteen dollars and forty-nine Financial guarantee.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second then is to approve, final approval of the retreat at Wolf Creek, Phases Two and Three, including the financial guarantees. Is there discussion to that motion? Okay, final, does that require a roll call, Fatima, on final? Okay, it does not, so we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next is our public comment. If there are any who would like to comment, please come and take the microphone. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your name for the record.
Good morning, again commissioners.
Good morning, Douglas.
I'm back. If I could have a little more than three minutes, I'd appreciate it, but I have several things to present and hopefully I can get through those.
State your name for the record.
Douglas Hanson.
We know who you are, but it has to be on the recording.
Absolutely, and I'm resident of West Weber. Okay, last week we talked, I talked, I give, provided information about the Weber River. Since then, I've learned some more information, did a little more research, and I've provided some information to you. First of all, there's a map of the lower end of the Weber River where it enters into the, excuse me, Ogden Bay. Some of the things that I found are very interesting. Some, couple of years ago, we were informed that part of the flood control project was to improve those headgates at the Weber River off the south fork, the middle fork and the north fork. I have found since, in the last week, in talking to a contractor that's worked out there and getting other information, that a lot of work has been done on the south fork, south end of that, and, but the others were improved, repaired, enhanced, but nothing really structurally was changed in those headgates. Now, if you look at the map, you can see the, the very south end, the south fork, and it's highlighted in yellow, the intersection there. That has a long route to get to the south side. And that branch, some years ago, that branch of the river was as wide as a ditch. It may be twenty, thirty feet wide, but it carries very little water. And yet, that's the area of the object. The north part, the, the one goes north and splits into middle fork and north fork, if you can see that. That carries most of the water from the Weber River. Middle fork being the focus of most of the water as it goes through into the, the bay area. And I've, I tried to get some photos and I couldn't get them electronically reproduced, so I don't have them. But the, those headgates at middle fork, where most of the flow of water from the Weber River goes, were repaired and enhanced, but nothing was replaced. So the, the area there is still narrow. It's still maybe sixty feet in total of flow through there on a river that's carrying, that's about a hundred-and-fifty feet wide and carrying the majority of the water. The north fork carries the second largest amount of water. Those headgates too were repaired and enhanced, but nothing more. That means that the, there's only about sixty feet of limited headgates to open up to allow water to flow through there. So when the flood comes, when the spring high water comes, it's still in essence dammed off. The floor, the bottom of those headgates are still above the floor of the, the bed of the river, so which creates a dam. And as you can see by the, the map there, for the middle and north fork, there's a long line that's straight south and that's the dike. That dike was put in in the late sixties to push the water from the middle fork, north fork to the south. Didn't quite work, it didn't back up enough, so they had a dike, I'm sorry, a ditch on the east side of that dike, and then eventually on the west side of that dike. So there's two ditches to try to carry the water from the north to the south. Now, in doing that, they had to back the water up, which, as I explained last week, backs up the river, slows it down, and the water at the bottom of the river's running slow and the silt falls out and silt's in the river. Those, in, in my opinion, that is one of the greatest priorities, is to open up the river so the end of the river has enough, such as a hundred-and-fifty feet of headgate. So when the water comes in and you have five-thousand-second feet of water, it's got a place to go and it'll rush out there and as water does, it'll help clean itself. And I would say that should be a priority because this would allow the river, the Weber River, to naturally fix itself and become part of the solution to the problem we have from flooding, because it'd increase the flow capacity and the volume. If you turn to Exhibit Two A, the Weber River, I've tried to do a representation of some kind of graphic to show the river, and estimating, best guess is that forty feet at the bottom. It's larger than that in many places, but assuming about forty feet wide to the bottom, I've indicated some kind of calculations there. And by getting a silt out, one foot of silt out from forty feet would provide eight-hundred-and-thirty-six cubic foot per second additional water. Now, use those calculations. Now, I'm not an expert at this and not that smart at calculating water flows, so I used online services. And Exhibit Two B, the next page, I used the services online, talks about open channel flow calculator from Auburn University. And then I put the, the best guess and estimates in, using one foot of silt, increasing the flow of one foot of water, the forty-foot dimensions, and that's how I come to eight-hundred-and-thirty-six. Second, environmental studies showed as to dredge the river. That's expensive, obviously, and, and takes a lot of time, but this way, the river will dredge itself if allowed to flow. So it needs headgates at the end of it where the majority of the water flows, so when that hot, fast water comes in the spring, it'll be able to clean itself and it'll dredge itself if allowed to do so. Right now, it cannot. And apparently, when we talked to the, the contractor said they were finished with the project. That project should have been, most of it concentrated where the water goes. The south end, you have a little water. It's diverted, it goes down there. It's great to have it at the south end, but it really needs to clean the river. You gotta have it in the middle fork. Have, having done the calculations on water flow, I just did additional calculations and moving to Exhibit Three A. This is the existing waterway through our property. And I thought I'd just do some casual calculations there and I've got a graphic here, a representation of that waterway with some dimensions. And then I put just a estimate. I measured that waterway. It's roughly averaged twenty-two feet wide by seven foot deep, plus at the bottom, there's a little extra trapezoid of seven and a half foot by one foot. So adding those together, you can see my calculations there. And if the water goes through at eight and a half feet per second, there's over a thousand second feet of water go, go through the existing. That speed, it calculates out to be five-point-eight miles per hour. Now, this compared to what NRCS estimated the flow of the floodwater through there, they estimated about fifteen miles an hour. We have higher calculations, but using just that, that's three times what's here. So that has capacity in it existing. Then I've listed alternates, A, B, and a given. That's if we enlarged and went to eight feet of, of water, we have there, it'll handle slower water. If we enlarge that twenty-two feet by ten feet, and I've got a calculation there, it'll, at three-point-two miles an hour, it'll handle over a thousand second feet. And then the smallest portion I got, the section listed and given there, if it goes six-point-seven miles per hour, that's nine-point-eight second feet, it'll handle over a thousand second feet. Now, to help with the calculations, I, I've added or included exhibits there from Auburn. Again, that online calculator. And then the next one, Three C, is from engineering.com. It's another calculator. I wasn't sure if the first one was accurate, so I added another source to calculate that and it came up with similar, that I can get to thirteen-hundred-and-fifty second feet by just the dimensions used there. Again, I'm using the best guess, estimates I can come on those inputs into that calculator and I offer that. Then the, the last series of exhibits, I thought, well, since I've done that, I'd estimate what the planned canal through there is, the concrete canal. So I put that in there and I've listed several things there and the one in the block says you can get two-point-eight miles an hour, four-point-two sec, second feet, that you can get over a thousand second feet on there. If you increase the speed, of course, you can go higher. And I've got the exhibits there in Four B and Four C that shows the two different calculators I used to come up with that. In Four B, if I use those dimensions of thirty foot wide and only seven feet of water, which leaves a, one foot of freeboard, that calculates in that calculator to be seven-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-one feet per second, using the slope given. And I saw in a drawing that the slope was point-nine-five. I thought that was too high. I used point-zero-nine. Then in this one, I got a slope of the canal at point-zero-one. I'm not sure entirely what it is, but that was my best estimate, which is fairly flat. And these flows are all assuming stable flows through a channel. And that would provide over seven-thousand second feet. And I double-checked that one and then the, the engineering.com estimator came out with approximately the same, over seven-thousand second feet. I thought if that's how those calculations go, and I'm, again, I have to assume that my numbers that I'm estimating are correct or close to it, even if there's fifty percent error rate in there, if I'm fifty percent correct, that's still saying that that channel will hold three-thousand second feet, which is three times what your objective was. So then I decided, well, what will amount to the one-thousand-second feet? And in Exhibit Four D, I did a calculation saying, okay, what would, what would be the size to make a thousand se- second feet? I put in ten feet wide, five feet of water depth, or approximately a six-foot wall. That canal would hold over a thousand second feet, which your objective, which is greatly smaller than what's being put there. I'm wondering if the calculations and how those calculations were done, by these calculations, which are supposed to be fairly somewhat accurate, I don't know if you're, whoever estimated that, that would, that structure you're putting in now is going to carry a thousand second feet. According to these two calculations online, it'll count three-thousand, seven-thousand second feet. So you've got a lot of capacity there with the structure, a huge structure. So I think you've got well over your needed capacity. And my premise would be that to get the thousand second feet, you don't need that large a structure. Now, that's according to this. And I would present that to you, saying, is what you've got what you need and is it more than what you need? And maybe we need to look at, recalculate some of that and find out where your engineering got their information and how that differs from mine. Again, doing the best guess from what I've read online, what I've got measurements in the waterways that I've documented here. So again, structures, water flows, and all, of course, in the canal, whether it's the existing or what you build, these are stable water flows, water flowing through a channel. And if there's a flood, you have to increase this because of the river's going to have a column, a, a flow of water that's many feet, twenty feet higher than this flow, and that'll be a lot of push to it. That'll push it even faster. So if you get to fifteen miles an hour, that'll carry a lot more than the flows I've gotten noted, noted here. So, just some information, I thought, as I found, as I did some calculations. Again, emphasis on fixing the Weber River, having the Weber River fix itself and eliminate some of the costs and the impacts to not only us, but others. That, I think, was one of the solutions that we, excuse me, could have in trying to solve this flood control problem. Now, thank you for your time. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Our next, next on our agenda is the assignment of the Pledge of Allegiance and Thought of the Day for Tuesday, February third, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. Let's see, our, I'm gonna extend the invitation to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our new deputy surveyor, Devron Anderson. We'll invite him and he nodded his head yes, let the record reflect, he, he is excited to do that. Thought of the day would be, who was it last?
It was me.
Commissioner Bell, so the thought of the day would be Commissioner Ebert. And we'll move to our final item on the agenda.
Make a motion, will you, Chair?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, will you adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks for being with us.